A quick reminder, so this meeting is being live streamed. We don't have any councils or anything attending remotely, but it is, it is being livestreamed. So if you can please use the microphone and speak directly into them, otherwise the sound doesn't carry on to, on that livestream. So we'll start with election of chair. Do I have nominations, any nominations for chair, councillor Arnot?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to nominate councillor Haywood.
So do we have a second for that? Libickley, do you accept the nomination councillor Haywood? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate councillor Jeff Trail, please.
We have a second for that. Fine, do you accept the nomination? Yep, so if we, any other nominations? So if we vote in favour of councillor Haywood being chair for now. That's isn't great, but I think that means you're elected. But just to double check, all in favour of councillor Trail? Councillor Haywood, congratulations. Would you like me to continue with vice chair while you set up? Yep. If we do vice chair now, do we have any nominations for vice chair, please?
Yeah, I'm going to councillor Jeff Trail again.
Second please. Do you accept the nomination for vice chair? Yeah. Any other nominations councillor Arnot?
Thank you councillor Bailey, please.
A second for that. Do you accept the nomination?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so if we deal with all in favour, sorry, any other nominations? All in favour for councillor Trail becoming vice chair? All in favour of councillor Bailey becoming vice chair? Councillor Bailey, you're elected. Thank you. There is also a pick for you up here. And over to our chair.
Well, thank you everyone. Very kind and very honoured to represent the actus chair for this committee. May I thank former councillor, county councillor Stuart Hughes for his many years of chairing here? And I'm delighted he's able to join us in a different capacity, but still be with us today and offer his experience and knowledge of what went before. Agenda item three, apologies. Do we have any?
Yeah, none received, yeah.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Full house. Agenda item four, declarations of interest. Members will see on the agenda that there is a link to a list of county councillors who are also district borough, city parish or town councillors. So I'll be asking for any other declarations outside of that. I did mention the other day to one of my, your colleagues, that that list of parish and town councillors isn't complete. There are some members here who have additional interests who serve on other town and parishes. So if we could just check on that, please, that would be great, just for veracity.
That is a live, a live link. So I think it should be updated as and when, but I'll double check to make sure it is complete. Okay.
That's fine. Thank you very much indeed. So can I ask any members here other than those who are making the declaration because of their other elected roles? Councillor Connor?
Hello. I know I should be on this list, but I'm also a district councillor for Middevon and I'm not appearing on the list, so I declare it now.
Thank you very much indeed. Councillor Borough?
Item nine, I am a resident of Newton-Bogford and declare an interest as such.
Thank you. I guess that would just be in effect. It doesn't affect you any more than anyone else. Thank you. Anyone else? No, I think we're good then. Okay, agenda item five, minutes. We have the minutes on page one to four of your agenda pack. That's the minutes of the meeting held on the 2nd of April. Effectively, we're being asked to confirm that.
Well, I'm happy to move them because I'm one of the only three that were.
I think that would probably be for the best. Indeed, so we have a proposal and a second to accept those minutes. Does anyone have any objection? If you so, please raise your hand now. You have an objection, Cathy. Oh, okay, thank you. So effectively, I think, given that councillor Jen, were you on that, in that meeting?
I wasn't in that meeting, but I think I can vote in favour of the minutes, even though I wasn't present.
Okay, councillor Borough, does this a query?
Just on minute number 101, A305 to speed limit at Kingsdown. It says we're requested to consider a report on that and I'm just asking for an update and matters arising really. So we don't appear to have it on the agenda.
Officers, are you able to assist with that?
Not having that date being brought to this meeting, so we can.
Can we have it on the next one, please? Or circulated out to members beforehand?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you councillor Borough. So I think for the purpose of those minutes, given that most of the people in this room weren't present, we'll take it as read that councillor Hughes has proposed, councillor Trail has seconded, councillor Jen is in general agreement. So I think they're accepted. Thank you very much indeed. We now move to agenda item six. Items requiring urgent attention. I haven't been made aware of it, but then.
We do, we do have one and this is just a reflection of, so previous Hattocks, there was an item that was essentially for the committee to put on record that they'd received training on. I can't remember the exact wording, but.
The local transport plan.
Yeah, the local transport plan and the Hattocks kind of role within that. It wasn't on my draft agenda, so I was putting it on. So we'll just raise it here if the committee is happy that I record, that they kind of noted they've received training on the local traffic, the local transport plan. Is that the phrase thing?
It is the process for implementation of the local transport plan.
Can I just check that all members are happy that that's noted? Have you all received training on the local transport?
I think it does.
That was the training.
Yeah, it does refer to that. So this was an issue raised at a previous Hattock. It does refer to the training received before this meeting. I did a previous Hattock reword it to role of the Hattock, if that's preferable to members.
So just for clarity, the item we're considering under urgent attention is that the previous Hattock committee received that training.
No, so it's this, it's this, this Hattock meeting. So that was the training we had before this meeting.
Oh, I see. Right, okay. Did that, was that, that was more an overview, I would have thought of the Hattock. I don't think we went into the transport plan in too much depth. I would just wouldn't want the minutes to record that we've done something we haven't.
We will circulate the PowerPoint presentation as part of them, as part of the minutes. And that includes the details, the constitution and the process within that.
I'm slightly reluctant, with all due respect, to approve something in the minutes that we haven't yet read. I appreciate you are going to circulate it and we've had an introduction to Hattock constitution terms of reference. But could this not just be deferred till the next meeting? Is it that urgent?
That is the, that is the item, the PowerPoint presentation with the constitution and the process. If you'd like something different, obviously that's something we'll have to.
Anyway, coming to semantics, could you, Fred, could you read the, the exact resolution we're voting on?
So, so, well, so I understand that the intended one is about the, the process of implementation of the local transport plan. But what I could do, what I did with the previous one is essentially the committee noting or confirming that they've received an overview or training, a training overview on the role of the Hattock.
I think that's fair representation.
Is that okay?
So everyone happy to approve that noted? Yeah, I think it's a general agreement. Thank you very much indeed. I'm sorry to be pedantic, but you know, you're an officer, I'm an officer in a different authority and minutes matter. Thank you. We now go to agenda item seven, the local waiting restriction programme. Pages five to thirty eight of your agenda pack. And who is, are you presenting this? James, thank you very much. We now pass to my apologies, James. James Branch, thank you.
James Bench, yeah. So yeah, so obviously we touched on it briefly this morning. So the local weight restriction programme is an annual process where we consider requests from county councillors in consultation with their neighbour highways officers. I recognise obviously this year, a lot of those county councillors are no longer in post, which is why obviously we've decided to bring this to the, this committee for approval to advertise the proposals. Emphasis at this stage, we are purely seeking approval to advertise the proposals. This is not a final decision. The intention will be that we'll bring, we'll advertise and we'll bring the results back to the, a future meeting of this committee to make a final determination on whether individual items are proceeded, dropped or modified as necessary. Obviously for this year, we've got twenty five sites to be considered as listed in the appendix. And if you're happy, Chair, I've sort of proposed we go through each member by member to make sure if there's any comments. And then obviously we can take a decision at the end to proceed with the recommendations within the report.
I'm absolutely fine with that. My apologies for referring to the mispronouncing your surname. I should wear my glasses more often. Yes, please, if we can go for each one and then, is it the convention that members we discuss at the end? Or do you want to do them as, do you think we should go as at each point?
I think if we discuss it with each member or members in turn, then that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
So the first site in the appendix is councillor Bickley, which is Mountson Lane, Sydmouth.
Don't know what normally is said. It seems eminently sensible. It's opposite a park, a youth area and the football club. And it does involve people congregating when there's football matches on, so I don't have a problem with this at all.
Okay, so moving on, we've got councillor Brown and councillor Trail's proposals in Keats Close, Moorfield Road, Royal Avenue, Exmouth, Exmouth Road, Limpstone, Fulford Way, Globe Hill and Town Lane, Woodbury.
Councillor Trail?
Well, thanks very much, Chair. Congratulations on your appointments. I've no issues with any of those apart from the introduction of the Keep Clear at Woodbury. That we need to have that front and back, please. We did bring it up before. And like all of the school crossings, not crossings, all the school advertisements of no parking. Like to ask if that could be prioritised, so we can get this done before the new term in September. That's right across the board, not just in Exmouth, but right across East Devon, please. Thank you.
So apologies, this is, I'm just trying to find the proposal, Town Lane Woodbury, this is upgrading of the school keep clear, the existing school keep clear, this is a new school keep clear.
There's an existing one at the front, but we needed one at the back as well, which is in Town Lane. However, these are the mandatory crossings that we've asked for all schools.
Yeah, I'm conscious, obviously at the last committee, that was discussed by yourself. But obviously, I think from our point of view, I think the suggestion to upgrade every school keep clear in East Devon should be, something should be discussed with the relevant local members. In fact, it was resolved in the minutes that cabinet be asked to explore options to make school keep clear restrictions mandatory outside of all Devon schools by default, in line with the council's strategic priority of being ambitious for its young people. I will confess, I don't know whether cabinet have been asked for that and what the outcome of that was, but we can certainly make sure that's raised again.
Councillor Hughes?
Yeah, I can, I can confirm that it did go to cabinet and it was approved.
Okay, I'll confess, I'm not aware of that one, but I would certainly have a look at that one.
Went to the last cabinet before the election. Because it, it took it from the last East Devon Hattock. Took the recommendation that it went to cabinet. You could look up the cabinet minutes. I expect Fred could do that on his.
Well, perhaps, James, could you, could you, as there's.
Well, certainly have a.
Please, have a look into that. And then if you could circulate to all the relevant, well, all the members of this committee, just what the initial minute that Tom just drew up and then the outcome of that cabinet deliberation, that'd be very handy. Thank you.
Yeah, I can certainly double check where we are with that position. Regarding the proposals for Town Lane Woodbury, something niggling about that school keep clear, whether we'd already looked at it. So what I propose regarding that site is I would sort of make a recommendation, Chair, that we'd discuss that site further offline with yourself and the two local members and we'll make a decision offline through the delegated powers.
Thank you. Councillor Dunbar?
Yeah, another issue regarding our role as district councillors in this. Can I ask whether we are allowed to make comment on the schemes where they concern us and we're representing them?
What does our constitution say?
Obviously, in terms of the Hattock position, obviously they're members of the committee, so they're certainly welcome to make their views, no, same as any other member.
Councillor Dunbar, your floor.
Thank you very much. All I would say is that the Keats Close one, I'm very, very supportive of that. Moorfield Road seems eminently sensible because people are parking very near the Zebra Crossing and Royal Avenue, there seems to be no issue. So those are my comments on the excellent ones.
Thank you very much indeed. Any other comments from members of the committee? No. Helen?
Just I concur with Geoff, really. Those points are valid for our area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to councillor Jen's, councillor Vanstone's proposals. So there's proposals for Craneford Lane, Young Hayes Road in Cranbrook. Yeah, just those two.
Councillor Jen?
Thank you, Chair. So the Craneford Lane site is following on from the comments about Exmouth, once again at a site very close to a school. And Cranbrook has got a tremendous reputation to maintain and improve on of having one of the highest levels of walking and cycling to school in the whole country, which is a really great thing about Cranbrook, something you should all be proud of. And but the, the parents who sort of pile in to this particular little vicinity with their vehicles make it more dangerous to walk and cycle to school. And I'm very keen that this scheme should be implemented, as is the town council. And the school are very strongly in favour of it. So I very much hope it will go ahead and I appreciate that it erodes very slightly the overall policy for Cranbrook of no signing and lining, which I do support. I think it's quite nice that there aren't lines all over the place, but I think around the school, you've got to make an exception. And then the other site is a place where on Young Hayes Road, where we have experienced problems that when oncoming vehicles meet, they can't pass. And because it's on a bend, they don't see, they don't pull in in advance. So I think we really have got to have yellow lines there. But again, it's exceptional. On the whole, we can run this town without yellow lines. But in those particular places, we got to. So I hope we'll, it'll go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very Dutch way of looking at it. Thank you. Councillor Manson, any comment from yourself?
No further comment. I agree with Emmy totally on this one.
Thank you, Fred.
Also, sorry if it helps. I've just been looking, update on the school keep clear restrictions review. So the cabinet in April, it was considered under urgent items and officers were asked to explore the implications of that and bring it back to a future cabinet. I see on the forward plan, it's scheduled to come back cabinet in the September meeting, so tenth of September. So I assume at the next East Devon Hattock, we'll have an update.
Thank you. If we could make a note for the next scheduled meeting to incorporate that, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay, thank you, James.
Okay, so moving on to councillor Bailey, we've got Ottery Street, Otterton, Brook Street, Ridgeway Gardens, Ottery St Mary, Primary School, Tipton St John, Beach Hill, West Park. Yeah, just those ones.
Thank you. It's Beach Park, West Hill, not Beach Hill, West Park, but. Thank you. My only comment is in relation to the fact that two of them are linings outside schools. And the consultation, if it's in the summer, will not allow parents who are not, they won't be aware of the consultation because they won't be going to the school. But equally, I don't want these to be held up from going out to consultation. Well, if the, if the consultate, can you, I don't want to hold everybody else's consultations up. But can you defer my school consultations until September and then not delay them? Is that possible? As part of the overall programme?
Due to the programme and the, and the cost of the advertising, we wouldn't want to delay any other sites. So, but I will have a look at the programme and see whether we can delay the advertising to outside of, to within the school term. And I can sort of confirm where we stand with that position.
Thank you. I don't want to mess everybody else's. So, but particularly for one of those, I think it's important because it's been something that's been discussed over an extremely long period of time that the people who are affected who are residents and parents at the school are fully aware during the consultation. I'm just worried that people won't know.
Sorry, which were the ones outside of school? I can see one of them.
Beach Park, West Hill is outside West Hill Primary School and the, in the spur of the road up to the primary school. And it's Tipton St John as well.
That's six oh eight and six oh seven. Just for clarity, I've just realised the date of the next meeting is twenty fifth of November, so we should be able to delay the advertising until after school holidays and still be able to report to that meeting. So yes, that's, that is certainly doable.
Councillor Borough?
Thank you, Chair. I realise this is just outside my patch, but councillor Bailey maybe be permitting this. But just question the Ottery Street, Otterton one, which Otterton is like many Devon villages. Parking is a real premium and we are restricting a number of houses here from, potentially restricting a number of houses here from being able to park outside their own houses. Just, I have concerns about that. And perhaps, you know, restriction from one side of the road may be the opposite, opposite to Duke's Close only might be more appropriate. That's my personal view.
Thank you. I went for a site visit with the neighbourhood highways officer and representatives from the parish council. And the reason for this restriction is the, because of the issues with the bus not being able to get down there to turn around. So then they are, the bus is turning around Bell Street and people are concerned, I think it's Bell Street, concerned about the road safety of the bus reversing there where, as opposed to where it should be turning around. So that's why this has come forward.
Thank you, councillor Borough. Thank you, councillor Bailey. One question for officers, a word that comes up an awful lot when I've considered this in different role is displacement. That natural thing that if you stop people parking here, they'll park somewhere else. And I think this comes back to the point that councillor Borough has just raised. Is there a, is there a definitive algorithm? Or is it simply just on a case by case basis, officers will consider it and think, well, they'll go there or they'll go here, or we're not sure where they're going. How does it work?
I think it's very much a case by case basis. Obviously, we will try and sort of consider where things might displace and look at impact of restrictions. But obviously, again, it's crystal ball territory where, again, we've got no idea sometimes, sometimes they will, they will end up in places where we don't want them to because you think common sense would say you wouldn't park on a junction, you wouldn't park and block the road. But we know from experience, there are some drivers that don't have that same level of common sense. So until we put some restrictions in, we don't know what the outcome is going to be, but we will try and consider that. And hopefully your neighbour offices and yourselves as, as members will try and consider that when considering what restrictions are being proposed. But ultimately, if there's an issue with the bus getting through, we need to remove the park at that location.
Thank you very much. And the final point, and this was touched on by councillor Trail and councillor Bailey in terms of the advertising in the school period. There's a couple of others that we've just already gone through. I think one in Woodbury particularly, would we be able to delay that as well?
Everything will be delayed, Chair. We'll advertise the whole scheme as one package, but it'll be after school holidays.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay, so moving on, we've got councillor Hookway's.
Chair, if I may.
Councillor Trail?
With regards to the Woodbury, that was brought up the last Hattock. So this was to get, all to make sure that the signs and the lines were placed before September. Not to go back to September and wait till next year before the lines are placed in situ. It's the whole point of the last meeting to make sure that the school signs were sorted out before the start of the new term.
I know the comments councillor Trail, but obviously in terms of the legal process and the resource, we've got to progress the restrictions that are detailed within these proposals. We will not have capacity and resource to deliver those by September this year. I recognise there were sites within tranche one that were considered the last Hattock meeting. And obviously, we've, we've heard the feedback from the cabinet about they're going to be considering all of other sites in September. But in terms of the legal process and the timescales it's taken, anything contained within this, we will not get advertised and in place by September this year, I'm afraid. Okay, so moving on to councillor Hookway, obviously we've got Elm Side and Tidwell Road in Budley Salton with Richmond Road and Trefuse's Place in Exmouth.
Thank you, Chair. Fully support. Happy to approve and see approved. Thank you.
Moving on, we've got councillor, three for councillor, no, two for councillor Arnot, Lanehead and Mayor Lane in Beer.
Yes, thank you. First one, Lanehead Road Beer is obviously just a matter of visibility and preventing parking obstructs a junction. The second one, I fully support, which is effectively yellow lines outside the Spley entrance to Beer Primary School. My only reflection, and I don't know if it's anybody else's excuse, is we'll put the yellow lines there and people will park and just drop anyway. But perhaps there's nothing we can do about it. At the moment I visited, they, they put, they put traffic cones there and it's policed with a small plea by the, by the head teacher and others. And I do wonder even if when the yellow lines go down, that's what they're still going to have to do. But anyway, I'm very pleased that that's down to go ahead. So yes, thank you.
And then moving finally on to councillor Jeffries, there's four sites in Honiton, Chapel Street, Gloucester Close, Honiton Bottom Road and Rosemount Lane.
Thank you very much. These, these, these seem to be, again, to improve visibility around junctions and to deal with obstructive parking in narrow areas. So I couldn't see anything terribly contentious in those. Thank you.
Councillor Bailey?
It's just a general point, as opposed to on councillor Jeffrey's item. Can I just check that when it does go to consultation? My understanding is that as ward members, we shouldn't be responding to that consultation because if we do, then we cannot participate in the subsequent discussions at, when it comes back to Hattock. Is that right?
I think that might be more a question for the clerk, but I think that has been kind of the protocol in the past. But I said Fred might be able to clarify a bit more on that.
I have no idea, to be honest. I've never been asked that question, but I can double check and get back to you.
I think that would help simply because there are so many dual-hatted members here. And all of us, I'm sure, understand the principles of predetermination and predisposition. But if you could seek some clarity on that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, my instinct is, is that it wouldn't be appropriate and that you should be consulted as, as local members anyway. So your, your views could be fed in by that. But I do think there is an issue with predetermination, but I'll.
Perhaps you can get some advice from Rhea and get that issue to all of us. That would help. Councillor Bickley?
Just a general thought. Several of these are about around a junction, no parking or waiting around a junction. At what point do we have to put yellow lines even though the highway code says not to park around a junction? And how is that police? That's appropriate time to ask that question.
So in terms of the highway code, the highway code is you should not park within ten metres of junction. It is not a legally enforceable restriction, a standard, which is why obviously we, we look at the yellow lines. And obviously, from a, from a stance, obviously, we don't want to start blitzing everywhere because obviously we have a limited enforcement resource. We're hoping the drivers, as we stated earlier, would have a common sense to where they should and shouldn't park. Some cases, you might be able to park a bit closer to junction than ten metres in sort of residential areas and parking is a bit more severe and overnight and things like that. So we don't want to actually hit the junctions with the lines unless there is a particular problem that is being raised. And obviously, this is what this process is designed to sort of try and help identify that and filter those ones out.
Thank you. I think this is a point that really all members here have heard over a long period of time is. Thank you. I think this is a point that really all members here have heard over a long period of time is you can't park on a junction. Well, that's what the highway code says, but we know people do. And it comes back to your point, James, about driver consideration. And this is a lot of it, the problem while we're having to do what we do. If drivers were more considerate, perhaps we wouldn't have to do these things and especially near schools, but there we are. So thank you for that explanation. And that brings us, I think, to the end of agenda item seven, the recommendation on this. Did you just clarify, Chris Fred?
So the recommendation is, well, the committee has asked to approve the advertising with the proposed restrictions within this report. So there was on a town named Woodbury, there was the agreement, the final approval on advertisement be delegated. And this is the standard wording, I think, be delegated to the director for climate change, environment and transport in consultation with the local members and chair of the Hattock. So the recommendation would normally read that the posed restrictions within the report be advertised subject to. And then I'll list that. And so that'll be kind of taken separately and made clear in the minutes that that isn't being approved as yet.
So that's the recommendation as laid out. Do I have a proposal from the county members? Councillor Jen, would you like to speak to that?
No, I'm just happy to, well, very briefly, every, all the local members are in support of all the proposals. So I think we should move forward.
Councillor Bailey.
I'm happy to second that, but I think there's no reference to timing. So if you follow this recommendation, it could go out to advertisement tomorrow, which isn't what we've agreed. So just like clarification on that, please.
So I, well, so there was a discussion on when these would be advertised and it would be after the summer holiday. So that'll be reflected in the minutes. Obviously not necessarily in the recommendation, but that will be in the minutes.
Thank you. Are you happy to second?
Yes.
Thank you. So may I ask, and just for clarity, the, the voting membership, is that just county councillors or everyone?
Everyone in the room.
Thank you very much indeed. So may I ask for a show of hands, please, to support that recommendation? That is unanimous with the exception of councillor Banston, who's just popped out. So yeah, wonderful. Thank you very much. We now move to agenda item eight, pages thirty nine to forty four in your agenda pack. This is the bus users and stakeholders conveniently called B U S forum. And we have an election of. Sorry, my apologies. Got to always work out the quickest way to get through these things. Luckily, it's a touchscreen now. There we are. So do we have, we've had a report issued to us?
So that's the update of the last meeting. We do also have here, I believe councillor Hughes was the representative last time. And also councillor Dumper also attends the bus forum because he's the representative of the district council, I believe. So we do have people here.
Correction, I'm representative Exmouth Town Council.
Sorry, Exmouth Town Council. So we do have people here if they want to provide an update and then we elect a new representative.
So we've had the written report presented within the agenda pack. We have a couple of members present. Do either of the councillors here wish to make any additional comment further to the report we have? No, I don't think we do. Oh, councillor Dumper.
I would just like to say, the last meeting, I didn't actually manage because of the technology somehow to get into the meeting. And I perhaps ask Fred to feed back to Rachel Phillips and people to make sure that the tech is properly working. Thank you.
Happy to.
Thank you very much indeed. So we are asked to elect a representative to that forum. Do I have any nominations? Have you, have we received any nominations in advance, Fred?
I've not, I've not received any. I mean, generally with this, I ask if anyone's interested.
Is anyone interested?
Yeah, I'm happy.
Usually the chair. Well, if, if, if members would like me to represent on your behalf, I'm happy to. Thank you, councillor Borough. Are there any other? I'm going to ask, are there any other nominations? Everyone's got their hands down, in which case can I ask the room to confirm that by a show of hands? There we are. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Say, Chair, I will report back if I'm here and have been able to get into the meeting myself.
Thank you very much.
I'll help out on that.
Thank you very much, councillor Dumper. You and I do see each other quite often, so we can, we can discuss that between us. We now move to agenda item nine, pedestrian crossings in Newton Pofford. And this is in accordance with standing order twenty three two, councillor Bailey, vice chair, has requested that the committee consider this matter. And I believe we have a public speaker, councillor Tribble, Chair of Newton Pofford and Hertford Parish Council.
Just quickly, normally the process is we would ask the councillor Bailey as a person to put it on the agenda and officers if they have comment, just to introduce the item, then public speaker and then kind of continue.
Thank you for correcting me. I will learn this as I go along. So councillor Bailey.
Thank you very much. I've asked for this agenda item on Newton Pofford because there was a very serious incident, in fact a fatality at one of the crossings in Newton Pofford. And I've been trying to, with, along with the parish council for some time to work to upgrade the pedestrian crossings. It's a heavily, heavily trafficked road. And I'm concerned about the lack of progress that has been made. So I'll make another comment if I may after, but I'm pleased that we have the Chair of Newton Pofford Parish Council here today.
Thank you, councillor Bailey. Officers?
I, in response to councillor Bailey's request, we will pass this to our transport planning team who are, who are aware of the request already. And they'll be considering a number of factors in, in order to, to understand the priority of this site. When, when compared to other similar sites across the county, those will include cost and funding, pedestrian crossing times and difficulty in a pedestrian survey. And I'm conscious that we have undertaken a pedestrian survey. We've been doing quite significant work with the, with the parish council over recent years. And to, to understand where some of the challenges are in that community, we absolutely recognise those. So we've recently undertaken a pedestrian survey which will show demand. I'm also conscious in the logical response to that, that it won't show all pedestrian crossings at that point because there may be that nervousness that the parish are speaking to us about. So we do, we would undertake that survey and work further with councillor Bailey and with the community to understand where that level of demand is and how that sits with those other priorities across the county.
Thank you very much indeed. To that end, may I invite councillor Tribble from Newton Pofford and Hertford Parish Council to speak to committee. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Mrs Susan Tribble. I'm the lady chair of Newton Pofford and Hertford Parish Council. I don't want you just to listen to me today. I want you to hear me loud and clear. Hattock must do better. In July twenty twenty two, the Hattock Committee reviewed an independent options assessment report by WSB, which examined pedestrian safety in Newton Pofford. The report outlined several options for further consideration and highlighted the urgent, I repeat, urgent need for a pedestrian survey to assess usage patterns and effectiveness of existing crossings. This review followed over two and a half years after the tragic death of Kenneth Cooper, who died on Boxing Day from injuries sustained in a collision with a vehicle exactly on the pedestrian crossing on Newton Pofford High Street on the twenty third of December twenty twenty. The timing on this crossing is still insufficient and leaves lengthening. It has yet to be done. While the pedestrian service has been carried out, no visible or meaningful improvements have followed. The two existing pedestrian refuges, one opposite Pride Hairdressers and the other at the end of the station road remain unsuitable and unsafe, especially for wheelchair users, parents with pushchairs and those with limited mobility. To add to the community frustration, the wigwags are not working properly as well and need to be checked as soon as possible. The twenty mile per hour scoring matrix provided to the parish council was confusing and inaccessible to the general public, undermining transparency and eroding trust in the process. This lack of clarity has raised serious concerns about transparency and whether community input to improving road safety is being meaningfully considered. Residents deserve clear information and genuine opportunities to participate in decisions that affect their safety and in their daily lives. Enough delay, enough confusion, we've had enough smoke and mirrors. We call on Hattock to publicly commit to implementing specific accessibility improvements based on the WSB report and the pedestrian survey findings with agreed deadlines and certainly before the next November Hattock meeting. We want you to replace or redesign the two existing pedestrian refuges to ensure that they are safe for all users, regardless of physical ability. We want you to make documentation, scoring criteria and decisions accessible and understandable to the public and include local voices in the review process. We want you to treat the safety of residents, particularly the most vulnerable, as an urgent, repeat again, urgent, non-negotiable priority. The people of Newton Pofford have waited far too long. Hattock must do better and it must start now. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tribble. If I could ask councillor Bailey to respond as the division member and then councillor Jen, councillor Borough. Thank you. And councillor Arnot, thank you.
Thank you to councillor Tribble. I totally agree. And I think what I have found incredibly frustrating is how long it takes to get anything done. So I think it took maybe three years for the pedestrian demand survey to be completed. And I couldn't tell you how many times I chased during that three years. It was a lot. And in addition, so when that finally did come through, nothing has happened. So my email to the relevant officer went unanswered and I just feel it's not acceptable. We have to, I understand that DCC highways cannot go round, cannot just do everything that everybody wants all the time in terms of implementing road safety measures. But I do think that it's perfectly reasonable in this particular case where road safety is the key issue that affects the community, that it's reasonable to have a process whereby a survey is carried out and then it's followed up. It's not just left, it's followed up in a timely way. Well, it just hasn't happened. We need to do something with that, the pedestrian demand survey. And I've heard what, what Tom Vaughan has said today. But I, I would really, really call on this committee, please, to have a specific recommendation that prior to the next Hattock, which is the twenty fifth of November, we, we have a resolution that DCC officers will work with the parish council and the local member to assess the pedestrian demand survey and will bring forward recommendations to improve pedestrian crossings in Newton Pofford at the next Hattock meeting. Because if we don't have that, I don't think anything will happen. It will just be left. And it will be another, years will go by and you can sense the palpable frustration from the parish council. And I, I have no doubt whatsoever that that is a reflection of, of the community of Newton Pofford who, who see nothing happening. So please, I would really hope that my, my colleagues on Hattock will support my recommendation and will have listened really carefully to councillor Tribble and actually something gets done. Thank you.
Councillor Jen.
I'd like to second that recommendation, every single word of it. I think that's absolutely what we need. The whole credibility of Devon County Council is probably at risk in Newton Pofford because that community has been ruined by this situation. And one tragic incident, one fatal incident is tragic. But, but if, if there should be another incident, I think we'd all be in a way culpable of having done nothing in one of the most traffic blighted communities in East Devon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Borough.
Thank you. I'm district councillor for Newton Pofford and Hertford, for those who don't know. I'd like to support everything that has been said so far by councillor Tribble and we thank her for, for coming and speaking today. Councillor Bailey, I completely support your recommendation regarding this. I've been banging on about Newton Pofford unashamedly since I've been on this committee. And maybe it is vested interest, but I try and do what I can for the community. As councillor Jen says, it is a, a community that is blighted, if you like to use that word. It, it's on a main road. It's on a, on a, on a A road. There are, depending on the stats that you read, there are ten to sixteen thousand car journeys a day through that, through that village. Almost all of them occur between seven AM and six PM. So it makes it very busy during the hours of daylight, pretty much. And crossing the road is incredibly difficult in a, in a village that extends to one point one miles. So we have one crossing. And ironically enough, that is where we had this fatality in December twenty twenty, where Kenneth Cooper, a former veteran of World War Two, aged over ninety, was crossing the road using the pedestrian crossing in the correct way. And the lights changed before he got to the other side. Why did that happen? So this is, this is, this is one aspect of, of road safety. The investigation that was undertaken found that the lights operated correctly. They have movement sensors on them. The movement detects movement of, of an individual that's crossing as long as they are crossing at more than point five metres per second. If you get a ninety plus year old pensioner crossing the, the road, often they will not move at that speed and that's what happened in this instance. And I'm sad to say, I've proven it because I asked Mrs Margaret Kimber, born in, in the village, ninety three years old, to test it. She did. I didn't even ask her to wear a, a hard hat. And guess what? The lights changed before she got to the other side. So there's something fundamentally wrong with our pedestrian crossing. And officers have, have said to me in the past, they operate like this across the whole of Devon. So if it's like that in Newton Pofford, it's like that for the five hundred or so crossings that we've got that are of this ilk throughout Devon. Makes them fundamentally unsafe. I'm sorry if that's expensive to fix. I'm sorry if that's a pain in it to, to officers to, to get to grips with, but they are fundamentally unsafe and this accident could have happened anywhere. My second point is the traffic islands. We do have two traffic islands. These were inspected with traffic officers back in January, I think it was twenty twenty two, in advance of the WSB report. The traffic officer that I went round with described both of those islands as terrifying. And I use that word and I'm quoting it, terrifying, because they are not wide enough to accommodate a buggy or a, a mobility scooter without one end of each hanging over into the highway. So they are not safe. And actually, if you look at the, there's one right outside my house, pretty much. And it is frequently hit by, the arrows are frequently hit and perennially replaced by DCC officers. So they're not really sanctuaries as it is. They're just not safe places. So we need a design, please urgently, that is going to make these, these crossings safe. And thirdly, the crossing survey has been published. And as, as has already been said, nothing's come of, come of that, that survey yet. And it's been months. We've had an election, we've had all sorts of things. That shouldn't get in the way of the work of the officers, in, in my opinion. We urgently need a second crossing, a crossing of, a safe second crossing in Newton Pofford. And I think the survey was pretty clear from a layman's perspective where the, where the majority of the traffic, pedestrian traffic was. That's pretty obvious. It's pretty simple to fix it. Let's just get on with it and do it, please. And I'll stop banging on about it. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, councillor Borough. And as the former clerk to your parish, I can attest with everything you've said. It is terrifying sometimes crossing that road, even. It is terrifying sometimes crossing that road, even for someone of, you know, my build, wearing a high vis jacket. It's terrifying. Councillor Arnold?
Thank you, Chair. I won't elaborate on the comments made by Jess and Chris because they know it very well. I've been visiting Newton Poppleford for half a century now, I suppose. And it is the victim, like the A35, the A3052 is effectively a major trunk road now. So that's how it operates. Stuart has done a fantastic job around Sidford, which has got, you know, all sorts of measures there that calm the traffic down and absolutely rightly so. And I pootled through there at 20, 20 miles an hour faithfully and diligently. You then get to Newton Poppleford, which is also, in the 50 years I've known it, an example of ribbon development, isn't it? And one which councillor Barrett is doing his best not to continue as ribbon development all the way back to Exeter. And it is really perilous. I've taken youth football teams there right to the other end of the village and just scarpering across the road is really tricky. And people are doing a high speed as they come down the hill, past Harford on the right and coming into the village. And they don't really slow down. And it's, it's just, it's the way the place looks. It doesn't, it's of course a village centre, but it also presents as a kind of, just a, you know, swift highway. There's no, there's nothing there to seem to slow people down. So it is worrying to hear this, that the, that the lights aren't working, that perhaps not coordinate it correctly. Councillor Barrett raises a brilliant, terrifyingly potentially expensive point is have we got the timing to write on any of the lights across the county. But we are asked to talk about this today. And thank you to councillor Triple to come from Newton Poppleford as well. So I would be happy to support this. Thank you.
Councillor Bickley?
I won't reiterate. Everyone's spoken so well about this. My only thought was, if you go to France, for example, you come into a village much like Newton Poppleford, which has a main road through it, it's absolutely clear that you are in a slow traffic area with lots of middle parts where there are flowers, there are chicanes. I understand things like that are going to be very expensive. But working with town and parish councils, there are funding pots available. It just feels like this is one of the areas where Devon historically perhaps has been a bit slow and seem to be very slow in areas like this. And I do wonder whether we need a strategy for villages like Newton Poppleford, where we work very closely with their councils and we fast-track instant measures that can be, that can make a massive difference. I hear what you're saying councillor Barrett about the timing of that. And that's obviously, that's something that should be sorted out like that, in my opinion. But I think it needs to go further. Somewhere like that could be a very attractive village that traffic goes through. And we need a strategy, I think.
Thank you. Councillor Bailey?
Thank you very much. That's a very good point, councillor Bickley. I think we do need a strategy for all villages because I think there's a lot of things that can be done with regards to gateways that aren't actually too expensive. And I'd be very happy to put forward Newton Poppleford as a pilot for any, any such strategy. Because I think probably more than any other village with the A3052 going through it and not having 20 miles an hour, which is what the community has long wanted. I think it would be an ideal candidate to be tested on what can be done in terms of gateways.
We've, we've touched on earlier driver behaviour and there is an element of this here. So as the clerk to Newton Pop, Newton Pop has a VAS, which it funded itself. And I recall downloading the data on the Houston system. And I think it was in excess of 100 miles an hour, a vehicle went through that village. So despite having a VAS and despite having signage and despite the road conditions that a normal considerate driver would think it's probably not safe to do 100 miles an hour, someone still did and the VAS picked them up. It's astonishing, but that important is life. But that detracts from the point we're having. So may I ask the officers to respond? Having heard the comments and the recommendations, proposals, suggestions put forward, could you, we have your comment, please?
In connection with the existing controlled crossing, a report was brought to this committee some time ago with a number of actions within that. My understanding was the timings were changed accordingly. I can ask for an updated report to come to this committee in regard to existing crossing. As members have mentioned, we are working closely with the community in terms of potential future crossings or amending to existing informal crossings. They are reliant on funding and prioritisation. We're absolutely seeking those sources of funding where we can do. But we will continue to work closely with the community and with local member on that.
Councillor Bailey?
Thank you for that. I think the reason I've put, I've worded the recommendation the way that I have is because I accept that funding may not immediately be available from Devon County Council, but that shouldn't delay the bringing forward of recommendations. They can be recommendations subject to funding. But where we are at the moment, it's kind of feels like a bit of a stalemate where actually nothing gets brought forward. And so there's nothing that anybody can do. Because potentially there's all, you know, there's other options for funding apart from DCC highways. So what I really want to see is some recommendations coming forward of what can be done potentially with appropriate costings.
Can I, should I come back on that point? Also, can I ask the point raised by councillor Barrett about the speed detector that below half a metre a second, has that been adjusted? Can it be adjusted to 0.2, 0.3, 0.1?
That was covered in quite some detail at previous Hattock, and I believe it will have been amended accordingly.
With all due respect, we're in a new situation. Unfortunately, we aren't privy to that information. Could that be circulated to members? Would that be okay?
At the minute, it can be, and the report could be circulated accordingly.
Thank you. I think councillor Bickley?
There seems to be some disagreement whether that's actually happened. So can we just make sure that an officer visits and make sure it has happened?
Oh. Councillor Barrett?
So I think we, what, what may have happened is that the standard length of time for the crossing was extended, but the motion detector was not, not changed. So, you know, the, the motion detector extends it further if it detects that there is still a pedestrian on the, on the crossing, as I understand it. Now, I both don't believe that that speed has been changed. And that speed, that motion detector is ultimately what killed Ken Cook.
Thank you for that. So I think there is some urgency here, that we do need some clarity on whether, and one would hope that's just a a switch, a dial within that equipment. I don't know. I'm not a technical highways expert. But if that's the case, it would seem a relatively easy fix, either a new detector or some tweaking of the timing there. But I think that the clarity will come from this. Councillor Bailey, my apologies, would you be able to just reiterate the recommendations or proposals you're putting forward, please?
Certainly. My recommendation was that Devon County Council officers will work with the parish council, that's Newton Poppleford and Harford, and the local member to assess the pedestrian demand survey and will bring forward recommendations to improve pedestrian crossings in Newton Poppleford at the next Hattock meeting. And I was, I was also going to say something like, Hattock will recommend to, that Cabinet will develop a programme of village gateways to improve pedestrian safety, something like that.
So that, is that within the remit of this committee to do that?
So we can ask Cabinet to explore options. It can't, well, I mean, you could ask Cabinet to develop it, but then it might just be a no. So explore options might be a bit, give them a bit more scope to explore that. What, sorry, what was the term? Did you say gateway villages?
Village gateways.
Can you just, sorry, can you just repeat that last line? So ask Cabinet to explore options regarding the development of a programme around?
Village gateways.
Village gateways. Should we reference kind of safety or?
With a view to improving pedestrian safety and slowing traffic, calming traffic?
Councillor Dumper?
What I was going to say, fully supporting what Jess is saying now. And other counties around the country that I've driven through have very active sets of village gateways, but I think Devon is somewhat lacking in this.
Thank you. I think that's where perhaps referring this to Cabinet to seek, we have a couple, well, quite a few Cabinet members here to seek their support for just exploring this and then working with our highways officers to just developing something. Because I think all of us recognise, and nothing can, can bring Mr Cooper back. Or I suppose the grief his family suffers, but we can perhaps show by our actions that we, we do recognise what happened and that we don't want it ever to happen again. Councillor Bickley?
I just wondered if you wanted to add in with a view to using Newton Poppleford as a pilot. Sorry, very sore throat here. Just with a view of using Newton Poppleford as a pilot and whether we wanted that in the Cabinet recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to have that, but I'm also conscious that I've, Collerton Rally Parish Council are trying to get a gateway without much success so far. So they would be also really keen to be included, I'm sure. And that both villages are pretty much next to each other. So I don't know whether we could include both of them.
I think in, in, in due deference, not denigrating the need from those two parishes, but there probably are lots of parishes who would want to be included. I can think of at least two or three. So perhaps at this point, we, we don't specify and we allow Cabinet and we can, we can pass information to Cabinet members saying if you, if you do feel it's worthwhile and you take it forward and then we put a call out and go from there. Would that be okay?
If it's acceptable, I can record in the minutes rather than the recommendation, the kind of willingness or intent to submit Newton Poppleford.
And Collerton.
And Collerton Rally.
Thank you. So we have that recommendation made by councillor Bickley, I think supported by councillor Dumper. Are there any other contributions from the room on this? Councillor Bain, my apologies, sorry, vice chair. Yes, so on that basis, can we go to a vote, please? All those in favour? I believe that's unanimous. Thank you very much indeed. And thank you councillor Triple for your contribution. You're more welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. It's entirely up to you. So now we move to agenda item 10, road safety concerns in Collerton Rally. Also added to the agenda, understanding order 23.2 by councillor Bain. Thank you. And I'll over to you councillor Bailey again.
Thank you. This is another item I've asked to be considered because I'm, it's a long traffic, again, in Collerton Rally is the issue that affects Collerton Rally and residents of Collerton Rally. And again, I've been incredibly frustrated about how difficult it has been to work, to improve road safety and to actually, the community is, is really proactive. The parish council is really proactive, working really hard to try and make things better and safer. There's no pavement in Collerton Rally. So again, after quite a long time of finding it very difficult to make any progress, I've asked for this agenda item to be brought forward and we have the chair of the parish council, councillor Clay here today.
James, any, any further to add?
I, I can add that we've worked very closely with councillor Bailey and the parish council in terms of looking at some of the challenges faced by the community. We have had positive engineered traffic management within, within Collerton Rally previously. Unfortunately, it actually introduced more unsafe driving behaviours. So it was withdrawn accordingly. The collision data in terms of the last five years doesn't show any collision site or otherwise recorded by the police over that period within that community. And I'm sure members will recognise that funding is attracted by collision clusters and data, unfortunately. That's because they are happening on our network currently. So we have to focus on those in the, in the short term. We are, as councillor Bailey suggested a moment ago, working with the community in terms of introducing a gateway. There are challenges around that in terms of bank height, steepness and existing speed limits and ensuring that what we do introduce there doesn't detract from the existing speed limits and enforcement of those and some of the challenges there. But we will continue to work closely with the community to try and understand how we can best ensure that drivers are aware of the community as they travel into and through it and behave accordingly.
Thank you very much indeed. And on that note, councillor Clay, welcome to the meeting. May I invite you to speak on behalf of Collerton Rally Parish Council and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name's Rob Clay. I'm chairman of Collerton Rally Parish Council. We're a village with about 600 residents on the, it's now called the B3178. It used to be the A376 on my old map at home. It's the primary road to Budley Solston and a secondary route to Exmouth. We've more than 5,000 vehicles a day passing through our village and have almost no pedestrian protection with only about 11 metres of pavement, five metres southbound, six metres northbound. The built-up area is a couple of hundred, 250 metres long. There is no pedestrian crossing to provide access from the main part of the village, the shop and the bus stop. And among others, schoolchildren and elderly people have to take their lives into their hands to cross the road full of traffic at a pretty consistent 30 miles an hour or more. There was a site meeting with Tom Vaughan on, in July 22, when we submitted our report on pedestrian and highway safety issues. And apologies is written by amateurs, we're not highway engineers. This had proposals for pavements or protected pedestrian areas and it outlined areas where this could be developed. There has been no response nor any feedback from this report. When I go to my local Tesco's or my Sainsbury supermarkets, I find they now have fully protected pedestrian walkways in all their car parks. They care about the law, but we have none in Collerton Rally. Our latest proposals this summer are for the parish council to provide an erect village gateways at the main road entrances to the village to try and slow down the traffic. Two pairs are proposed and one out of four have, are accepted. Three out of four have been rejected. We're also told we could have a 20 mile an hour speed limit in our village and signage to go with it, if we fund it ourselves. But the cost at more than £20,000 is about the same as our entire parish council budget for a year. The second highway safety issue which we have is the T junction at Hawkeland Road with the main road. This is blind in both directions when you turn onto the main road from the side road. Hawkeland Road has become a very busy road with the success of the businesses at the old Sawmill's industrial estate. Last year, a new development was permitted, being a container, a container storage facility. And that was supported by planning and highways. The parish council ourselves have provided mirrors at this junction, but these are ineffective and do not solve the problem that the junction is simply not big enough to take the large lorries. And the garden wall on the corner has been demolished around a dozen times in the last 10 years. And in fact, it's been hit three times this summer after being rebuilt at the beginning of the summer. We've met the local MP David Reed in April to try and mobilise support and he is now assisting us. The junction is not fit for purpose and it needs to be enlarged and to have traffic light control to give people safe access. Our third highway problem is the section of the B3178 as it leaves the northern end of the village, where it is severely potholed.
Councillor Clay, I'm sorry to cut into your time. If you could wind up now, if that would be okay. Appreciate you. Want to get your point across?
I've got one more sentence.
Thank you.
We're told it's programmed for resurfacing, but not until 26 to 27 financial year at the earliest. We would appreciate a little help to get some of these highway issues sorted. Thank you.
Thank you indeed councillor Clay. Councillor Bailey?
I'd like to thank councillor Clay for coming to talk to Hattock today. I think there has been, there was a response from Tom Vaughan on one aspect of the 2022 report. But my feeling is that, I, I heard what Tom said about the finance. But I think DCC highways need to help communities to help themselves. So until it's clear what can and can't be done, then there's no opportunity for the parish council So until it's clear what can and can't be done and there's no opportunity for the parish council to actually implement anything. And so what I would like to do similarly with regards Newton Popford is to call for a report before the next meeting, before the next Hattock. Outlining what highways consider could be done to improve pedestrian safety. In Collerton Rally, so that then actually the community can see what can be done and implement it subject to funding. I think. Our roads in East Devon, there's been substantial development and we can see it in all of our roads. So what 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 was may not have been a safety issue twenty years ago or thirty years ago. I think things have really changed and I think a Collerton Rally, like Newton Popford. Is a community that's really, really suffers from the extent of the traffic that goes through it on a daily basis. And how that actually impacts the people that live in the communities on a daily basis. So I I I'm reluctant to agree to kind of not to there not being a specific recommendation. I think we need to have a specific recommendation, which I'd like to put forward, that officers will work with the parish council and local member. To assess potential pedestrian safety improvements in Collerton Rally. And will bring forward recommendations to improve pedestrian safety at the next Hattock meeting. I'm not saying that I expect DCC to fund everything or that funding is available. But I think we need to be clear what can be done subject to funding. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bailey, councillor Borough and then councillor Jen and then councillor Hooking.
Thank you, Chair. Completely sympathise and empathise with councillor Clay and of course what councillor Bailey has said. The I would like to second her recommendation. The just a question for officers, has a crossing survey been undertaken at Collerton Rally? And if not, why not? Can that be programmed?
No survey's been undertaken in Collerton Rally in that respect.
Sorry, if I can come back please, Chair. I believe that will be sensible in this in this respect, but I guess it we will leave it to officers if they can come. Can come back to us in November, so these sort of like steps that would be required. If anything, if any village deserved twenty miles an hour with the, oh, sorry.
And I'm gesticulating to councillor Tribble. If councillor Tribble could perhaps turn off the microphone for me. Thank you.
Twenty mile an hour, I mean, we've discussed it at length in this committee over many years and, you know, the fact that we used to be able to. Manage to get four or five twenty twenty mile an hour schemes through the whole of Devon in a year. Was just painstakingly slow in comparison to such as Cornwall that. The men blanket changes throughout their initial throughout their county and it showed the prioritising. Back at prioritisation, if in my personal view, of a twenty mile an hour limit. However, Collerton Rally has natural bottlenecks, if you like, that are both ends to it, which really support twenty miles an hour. You you can't really. And you can't drive more than twenty miles an hour safely at either end of it. But without signage, the unwary, the visitors to our to our. Beautiful part of the world, of which there are many at this time of year, obliterally unaware of that and they go hammering through it at thirty. Hit the bottlenecks and, you know, we see them reversing back up the road, both ends of the village particularly. The southern side where there's, there are natural sort of bottlenecks. And and also I have great sympathy for the the junction at the land. That road, which is a terrible junction. And to think that we have permitted forty tonne trucks come out of that junction is frankly laughable. You can barely get. A box van in that corner safely and it's completely unsurprising to see or to hear that. Garden walls are being knocked down frequently. It must be almost impossible for forty tonne trucks to go around there. I don't know what the the solution to that is because we have an industrial estate. And to impose a traffic restriction on the size of vehicle, I'm sure we're allowed to as a county. But and how that would impact the businesses that are there, but something needs to be done. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Jen.
I'd like to support the recommendation and in particular that should a report should be brought forward with a. You'd like to think that will include moving towards a twenty mile an hour limit for this village. It's incredible. That it's a thirty going through Collerton Rally with no pavements and I find that completely wrong.
Thank you councillor Hooking.
Well, thank you, Chair. I mean, I absolutely support the recommendation. I absolutely support all the comments that have been made. As someone who was born and raised in East Devon, though the village is Collerton Rally and Newton Popford, the roads haven't changed since I started to drive in nineteen seventy. Quite frankly, and it's not good enough, but it's simply, the phrase not fit for purpose is absolutely sums it up. We are now in a different situation. We have economic growth. We have had a lot of development. We are at a an area dependent upon tourism. We need to have roads that are fit for purpose. And many tourists come down and just on disbelief at the quality of the roads that that we have in and around East Devon. So we do need, I think, to do something and we need to do something urgently. So I I absolutely support residents in this. I think I know it's an intolerable situation that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trail.
Thank you very much, Chair. A couple of points. I agree with what's been said so far with regards to going through Collerton Rally. I'll go through it at least once a week to get to Sidmouth. But you have got natural gateways there, but where the shop is and where the pub is and the road to go down to the school, there's nothing there. The traffic will be. Increased in the next couple of months. Because what's going to happen is the A three seven six road into Exmouth will be closed for a number of weeks. And then we will have a diversion which will go through Woodbury, which also has issues with the village. And what myself count former councillor Scott did do with the assistance of highways department, the safety unit. And the developers, because we've got five new applications that have actually come into Woodbury. And these are not part of the local plan. Therefore, anything that we ask is on a voluntary basis through developers. To what we are proposing with the five developers, we've got their. Thumbs up is that they will work together with highways to put in gateways at either end. And also do something in the middle of Broadway, but that's another point. Coming back to the three seven six closure, if. Traffic that comes out of Woodbury on to the Woodbury Road and we have an accident at. Pint Bridge. Exmouth traffic will have to go along the Sidmouth Road down to Newton Popford and across and through Collum. So. There needs to be something to be looked at. What can be done there? I'm not quite sure because. Road is fairly narrow around the, I would call it. Call it. Where the commercial route, so we've got the estate. We've got the pub, we've got the shop, we've got the school. Something there needs to go in place, but I think something was placed there. And caused more of an issue. So it's back to the it's back to the drawing board with the highway safety team and the design team to come up with something feasible. Going back to. Yeah, but going back to gateways, this is a thing right across the county with villages. And where where we get the funding for that, I don't know. Twenty miles an hour, we've already got. Issues there with, how many is it per year can go through? Six, six per year that can go through and there's over twenty of it. Am I not right, Tom? With regards to twenty miles an hour.
I would say there's about a hundred requests, over a hundred requests across the county.
To it, there is an issue, Chair.
I'll come to you in a second councillor Hughes. Councillor Jeffries, did you want to come in?
Yeah, I've listened to everything about obviously the safety issues of this as well, but just making our our communities and and. This is, I think Nick mentioned the fact that roads haven't been upgraded and yet the pressures keep on coming. About making making those settlements livable for people as well. So and that impacts in ways that are don't necessarily end with tragedy of death or injury or collision. But make those places where families and children don't want to live and that skews how people live in their communities. Listening to all of this and I'm thinking of Dalford on the A three seven three between Honiston and Clumton and there's no pavements. Not many people do cross the roads, but yet it it looks like a village centre, but it has been over time. Some point where it it doesn't function like that anymore because of increasing use of that road. And something we can do to bring those bring those communities back would be great. I was talking to. Resident there who was considering moving, who had small children, because just getting from their house to where the school bus was. Was an unpleasant. Situation every morning. So there's something about building in in making our communities livable again. Thank you.
Thank you. Just before I come to councillor Vanstone, I mean, any member here who served on their planning committee. And I appreciate councillor Connors from a different district authority, different planning authority. I think we're all aware of when we've considered planning applications and we look at the impact of a development on where it's going. That's sometimes achievable, highways puts in its comments, but the consequence of traffic to developments elsewhere. Down the road, around the mountain is often not possible to gauge and certainly when we looked at the appeal statistics. And the appeal cases where a planning authority tries to push back, quite often that fails because the developer falls back on. It's not our problem. We deal with the problem where we are, we'll deal with displays, we'll deal with access, we'll deal with parking. But we're not really concerned with what happens half a mile down the road, but as councillor Trail has rightly pointed out. All it takes is a diversion or a road closure or an accident and suddenly you've got a problem somewhere else. Now, I appreciate that 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 permutation is almost limitless, but it still needs a consideration, I think, as as a. Corporation between this authority and the planning authorities and moving forwards, that will perhaps become a little bit easier. Or perhaps not. Councillor Manson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Firstly, I fully agree with all the recommendations for Collerton and Newton Popford. A very simple question to the officers and to anybody who might be able to inform me. Why does it cost twenty thousand pounds to simply put in a twenty mile an hour zone through the through a village that needs one, please?
Again, it's the the detailed design that needs to go into it. It's the officer time, the staff time that's required to go into it. Obviously, there's a legal process we go through, like we've mentioned with the weight restrictions. We need to make sure the legal documentation is right. We need to make sure we've got sufficient signage. And obviously, that's where a lot of the the issues come in to make sure we've got sufficient signage, rounders on the road. It's it all adds up unfortunately and this is what this is costing and this is why obviously the council is very limited as to what we can do and what resources. And I know obviously a lot of the comments that we've discussed today, I would like to sort of caveat that obviously. The staff time to investigate all these options is also a resource and it is a limited resource that we have within the council. So I get that there's a desire to do things as officers, we would love to do a lot more than we can do. But we have a limited amount of resource and as as an authority and an officer, we have to try and prioritise that over what we can do. That's not to say we're not going to do anything, but obviously I'd just like to put that in as a caveat to make members aware that the officer time is also a resource and is also a funded resource that we need to consider.
Just to add to that, are there breakdowns of the costings for that available to find or see publicly?
I can certainly see what information we've got in terms of the schemes we've already delivered and the cost of those, but I think, yeah, the twenty thousand pounds is about. It will vary depending on the size of the community that is being twenty. Obviously, we've got some that look like the whole of Clumton versus something that might be Collerton Rally. So it will vary depending on the size of the community, but I can certainly look at what information we've got about what schemes we've delivered so far and the costs and get those circulated for members benefit, yeah.
Thank you very much, James.
Just before I come back to councillor Hughes, I suppose this, and I'm mindful of what you've said, everything in local authorities is a resourcing issue. This council and the cabinet and members, when it comes to budget time, they can decide to via money to different places. Appreciate there is a finite amount of money, but that's a decision for members and the cabinet at the time. In terms of the cost of doing something, I think this is an opportunity because. Officers would have heard the feedback from this committee and previous committees, I'm sure, in in over many years. But a private business, a commercial business will look at a process and will think, right, how could we do this more efficiently? How can we do it quicker? How can we do it cheaper? And that's just part and parcel of life and I think that is. Again, for the record, this isn't a criticism of how we do it currently, but I think there's always potential for looking at. Different ways of doing things. Thank you very much indeed for attending. Bye. Thank you. So I think that shouldn't ever be discounted and I I take councillor Vanstone's question in the spirit it's intended is. I think there's always a way of looking at things within the law, within legislation, within the resource we have. To see if it can be done differently. So I think that's, we'll leave it on the table here. Councillor Hughes, you want to come in?
Yeah, very briefly, Chair. I mean, I believe Collum Rally's prime candidate, twenty mile an hour, also felt that. And I know the parish council have been in touch with me and I've always supported them. Actually went out there to a site meeting with the parish council and that's when Claire Wright was the county member. And looked at the the area near the the shop. Now, there used to be a pedestrian pedestrian refuge here. Which was taken out, I think Tom Vaughan remembers her, because it was supposed to be dangerous, but what what it did, of course, was speed up the traffic. Well, opposite the shop, there's an area of land which would be available to actually. Put some footway because you've got a problem there at the moment because the vehicles park there. And that's the school where they pick up the kids to go to the schools on the on the coaches. And it's forced them to stand in the road to get on the coach. So something can be done there and I think, you know, that's one of the things that should be done. And that's something I was saying about, it must have been eight years ago, it's before Jess became a county member. Okay, but I'm full support of the twenties for Collum Rally.
Thank you councillor Hughes and I think that just reinforces the the point that councillor Bailey raised for whatever reason. This is the exasperation that our communities put to us, they put to their own town and parish councils. It's that time, you've referred to it eight years and here we are discussing it again. I'll come back to you one second councillor Clay. The only thing I would add and councillor Bickley, thank you, is is just that. Reality, so Axminster Town Centre, the entirety of Axminster Town Centre is a twenty mile an hour zone. I routinely have to help elderly people across the road opposite where I work and the traffic goes through Axminster well above that speed. It's driver behaviour and driver consideration. So again, it's always. There is always a flip side to what we're trying to achieve here. Councillor Hookway, actually, if you mind, councillor, I think councillor Bickley did have a hand up before you. Is that okay? Councillor Bickley.
Thanks very much, Nick. I was going to say what you were saying enforcement is so hard going through a road in Sidmouth, for example, Alexandria Road. Everyone just bombs down it. It's twenty twenty mile an hour zone. And you bomb down to get to the next clear bit so someone else can come up and it's incredibly dangerous. I went through a village, it was on the way to going up to Barnstable the other day. And they had twenty is plenty stickers on every bin going through a village. And some people might hate that, but I did think then, I believe that twenty is plenty is coming back to Cabinet to be discussed, but that is nothing that we need to put in place. That can be done by villages and towns and I wonder if that's publicised enough. That they can apply for those sorts of stickers and do some sort of coordinated approach in their village. At least it shows people that they care and they slow down because they see so many signs. I, I don't know if there's science behind it, whether it does work. Um, another question about trying to save money, absolutely agree. You know, we come up with these quotations or council work that private companies just wouldn't accept. Cat, is there any way of cutting some of the red tape by doing sort of blanket legal work? So, you know, it's like buying a house. Everyone has to get the survey done and you do think this is crazy. Why don't we do it for all villages, have some criteria that we have legal yeses to, and also a menu for what towns could pick and choose if they can raise funding. What they're, what they must do legally, how much it ought to cost. And if they can find businesses that are prepared to do it, that still come to the criteria that we as a council need them to come to. Can they pay for it privately to be done? If a builder works, say, whose children are at the local school, he may well be able to do it at cost price. Why are we, you know, do we allow for that is my question. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bickley. Um, I think it comes back to the point you raised earlier, this, this is a perhaps a pivotal golden moment for this committee to consider those things, not just where we put W L lines and, but to perhaps work with the cabinet in a strategic way to do what we, our residents are asking us to do. And we have to manage expectations. This authority does not have oodles of cash holding around. But perhaps then we make sure the cash we do have is spent in the most expeditious and efficient way. I'm sure it currently is, but perhaps we can explore other ways of doing it. Um, councillor Hookway and then councillor Bailey.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm following on from councillor Trail's comments about the closure of the A three seven six and diverting traffic through Collerton Raleigh. I'd just like to, I'd like to ask officers if they have any particular arrangements they have in place or going to put arrangements in place. So when that traffic does go through Collerton Raleigh, how are they going to manage it to keep its speed down? Because there will be an awful lot of traffic. Not only will it be in terms of visitors, but it'll be in terms of heavy goods vehicles as well. Are there any plans in place? Thank you.
If it's on my, I, I can answer that. We did ask for emergency plans when, way before we started the Denham Way linkway. So we've had, we have got meetings in place. We have got stakeholders who get their letters. And at the moment, there is a embargo on any planned works on Sidmouth Road through Otterton there, uh, three seven six, Salterton Road, Budley and Woodbury. The only thing that we can't do or have any powers against is emergency utility works. But what we have done, where they were getting a five day licence, that's now been reduced down to a three day. So the answer to your question is yes, there is signage up. Enforcement, that, that would be a police matter, but everything else has been covered to date. Tom?
Um, just before you come in, Tom, councillor Hookway, do you want to respond to?
Uh, yes, just to say thank you to councillor Trail for his, for his information. That's very, very helpful. I'm still concerned that, that, you know, the purpose of this debate is about Collerton Raleigh. How are officers going to mitigate the excessive amounts of traffic, holiday traffic going to Collerton Raleigh during this diversion? That's the, that's the point. We've already clearly stated that we're going, we, we need to do something with Collerton Raleigh. We're suddenly going to put it under even greater stress. How are officers going to protect it? Thank you, Tom.
My understanding that diversion routes actually through, through Woodbury. Um, councillor Trail was, was it, was referring, I believe, to should there be an incident on that route where they travel next? What I would say is that Collerton, and one of the challenges we face is that despite being a small community, Collerton Raleigh does sit on our strategic road network. Therefore, it's likely that significant amounts of tourist traffic, et cetera, will travel on that route. It is part of our strategic network, unfortunately, so. That would be a logical next move, should there be challenges on that route to, to move on to that route. So there's no expectation that we wouldn't have significant travel at any time during the summer period because it is a desirable destination through there and, and beyond on that route, which is something we obviously welcome. Um, so we wouldn't look to introduce any further restrictions on our strategic network.
May I ask, following on from councillor Hookway, obviously, we are, you briefing earlier, you touched on T R Os and we know we have temporary T R Os, T T R Os. Is there any mechanism when we know that this situation is going to happen, that there's going to be a consequence of some roadworks and road closures to, for that duration of that period, put up a temporary VAS? I appreciate the, the efficacy of, of VASs, S S I Ds is, you know, up for debate. But it's something simply a, a tripod mounted, securely mounted, strap it to a lamppost. VAS, we hold, you know, the county can hold a couple of these devices. So where we know a, a community is going to be impacted, we simply just put it up for the duration of that works in consultation with the parish council, whoever. And it just might do something, you know, a smiley, frowny face may slow traffic down. Thoughts?
I think that sounds a positive suggestion and we do ask communities to work together and, and share VASs, vehicle activated signs. So that actually there is an element of, it's not what they see every day when they pass up. We ask them to move them or take them down for a certain period and, and so sharing them among the community and getting them used all of the time whilst not necessarily in the same place, so we would encourage. And I believe we certainly did have a number of mobile ones in the county and county ownership. But we could perhaps investigate the use of those in, in a situation such as this.
I think perhaps, yeah, asking parish councils, and I do take your point entirely, and there is, there's lots of positive examples where parishes are sharing. But in this particular incident, I think asking a parish to share the cost of a VAS for a three day road closure. So perhaps could ask the, the relevant ward members, division members, perhaps to liaise with their highways officers and major that point, if we have these temporary ones, let's get them put up in Collerton Raleigh if we're expecting.
Uh, Collerton Raleigh has VAS, which I've funded through, not, not additional ones. Well, I'm sure if there were some additional ones available, if there's going to be a diversion, which I'm hoping there isn't going to be unless there's an incident, but, um, I've helped fund the VAS through my locality.
Indeed. I think it's, if, if, for example, it's one that just flashes thirty or they're going too fast, if we have as a county, and even in the East Devon locality, some additional ones that look different because it's that sign blindness that people after a while, that you're quite right, they ignore them. But if they, we have access to a couple of extra, and I'm sure within the county budget per se, we can stretch it to buy a couple of signs from the, the relevant manufacturers, but that they look different. That's the key. They must stand out from the ones that are existing. And, and thank you councillor Bailey for, for funding. I know other members here have funded VASs and S S I Ds in their patches. But this seems to be something perhaps we could do that as a stopgap for that three day period, just to try and slow people down. Thank you. So I think we've, we've probably done that one to death. Um, councillor Bailey, would you recap on what your recommendation is? Sorry, we'll keep doing this.
Um, my recommendation was that D C C officers will work with the parish council, uh, Collerton Raleigh Parish Council and the local member to assess to assess potential pedestrian safety improvements in Collerton Raleigh. And we'll bring forward recommendations to improve pedestrian safety at the next Hattock meeting.
Have you got that, Fred?
Yeah, I'm, uh, would you? I mean, it's implied by recommendations, but if I change that to report including recommendations, thank you.
And so that's a proposal from councillor Bailey is seconded from councillor Burrup. May I ask for a show of hands, please? That's unanimous again. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bailey, for bringing that forwards. Um, we now move to agenda item eleven, uh, which isn't actually, uh, I think within your agenda pack. But Fred, can you cover us through this one?
Uh, yeah, so there's, there's nothing. So that's just an item that if we did have a petition or a part and review, we're just addressed it here, but there's nothing. So it would just go in the minutes as there wasn't anything.
We can skirt over that one and we then come to agenda item twelve, actions taken under delegated powers, which is the gender item twelve, pages forty five to forty six of your agenda. And the recommendation is that a committee be asked to note the report. Do any members wish to speak on this item? Or are you just happy to note the report? I think that's, uh, yes, we will note it, consider it noted. Uh, we then move to agenda item thirteen, uh, which is the final item on the agenda, dates of future meetings. The twenty fifth of November, twenty twenty five and the twentieth of March, twenty twenty six. Obviously, the outcome of today's meeting is that there will be some additional items to be on that agenda, but we'll leave that with the officers to ensure that they're on. Councillor Trail.
Thank you, Chair. I know it's not on here and we don't have any other business, but there was something that I think could have been brought up this morning with the, the training. And I would recommend that all councillors work with their local highways officers and also enforcement officers and take at least one trip per month to go out with their officers through their managers. Please, ensuring they've got this safety equipment to go out with them, just to see what they have to put up with. Because there's, it's not just a case of just driving around and knocking on somebody's door and saying, cut your edge back. Sometimes you've got to get dirty. And I, I think it would be good. And on top of that, our local highways officer sends us once a quarter, I think it is, a list of works that are going to be coming forward. So we have an idea exactly what's going to happen in the area and we can inform local residents.
Sage advice, councillor Trail. Um, and I'm sure through the officers here, if members aren't receiving a report of that kind, just please convey that to your highways officer and, and request it because it will be very helpful. Um, councillor Connor.
Sorry, it was just, could you repeat the dates of the next, uh, also the times?
Think it will be a consistent time with this.
Yes, so twenty fifth of November and the twentieth of March, both at ten thirty a.m.
And both at county hall and, and for the time being. Um, so that, I think, brings the order of business to an end. Um, thank you for bearing with me during my learning curve. Um, thank you all for attending. It's lovely.